Welcome, everybody. My name is Ilan and I'd like to, I'm Paul Manley's Chief of Staff. I'd like to welcome you to an online, an online town hall meeting with Paul. Before we start, I'd like to acknowledge that we are coming to you from the unceded territory, traditional territory of the Tsunamal First Nations. And that the writing of Nanaimo Ladies' Myth also includes the territories of the Staminus, Lyax, and Tsunamal First Nations. So this is being livestreamed to YouTube. And we welcome you to write questions into the YouTube comment box. Laurie is going to be moderating the YouTube and she will pass questions on to me and I'll pass them on to Paul. And Paul will answer them for you. Please subscribe to Paul's YouTube channel so you don't miss, miss any things that come up in the future. And also you can visit PaulManleyMP.ca to learn more about the work that Paul is doing, read blogs and learn about events going forward. So we'll start with, Paul will give an update on his work in the past few months in Parliament. And then, and we'll do that kind of, the whole evening will be done kind of an interview format. And in the meantime, as I said, you're welcome to ask questions in the YouTube comment box. And those questions will be passed on to Paul. So now I will pass it on to Paul.
Alright, thanks, Ilan. Let me know if you can't hear me well. It's an honour and privilege to, to serve as a Member of Parliament in Nanaimo Ladies' Myth, within the territories of the Tsunamal, Staminus, Tsunamal, and Lyax and First Nations. And it's been a busy, busy session. And where to start? We just had a budget tabled for the first time in two years. It's actually my first budget that I've got a chance to examine. It's 700 and some pages long, so I'm not going to pretend that I read the whole thing, but I did dive into the sections of it that I have covered for my critic areas. I've been working on different pieces of legislation. So there was Bill C5 and Bill C8, which were both following through on recommendations, calls to action for the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. One is to make Orange Shirt Day a national holiday to commemorate and remember what happened with the residential school system. The other is to change the oath of citizenship. So people know that they are declaring that they, they will, will have allegiance to the Constitution and that they understand that the Constitution protects the rights of Indigenous people. So those two, there's no amendments to those bills that I put forward. I've been working on a series of other bills, though. I've put forward amendments to Bill C18, which was the Trade Continuity Agreement between Canada and the United Kingdom. After the United Kingdom left the European Union, they were part of the SEDA agreement, the Comprehensive Economic Trade Agreement, between Canada and the EU. And because they had left the EU as part of their Brexit, they were, were re-engaging a trade process. And I put forward a number of amendments to that bill, none of which passed. But tried to do that work nonetheless, I had the support of some parties, but not all parties. I did get some bill, some amendments passed to the main legislation, Medical Assistance in Dying Legislation, that ensured, I put in forward amendments to ensure more protection for people with disabilities. And I managed to get one of those amendments passed. And one of my amendments was, the very similar wording was added by the Senate. Currently, we're in committee on Bill C10, which is Changes to the Broadcasting Act. This is something that, the Broadcasting Act hasn't changed since 1997. So this is a generational opportunity to change a bill. And there's a lot of flaws with this bill. I've, I've had 27 amendments tabled to this bill. And so far, four of 17 have passed. In total, there's 127 amendments to this bill, which just goes to show that there are some flaws with it and some, and some things that need to be fixed. And one, one area of the bill was actually removed and has created a real kerfuffle and a lot of blowback. So I'm going to do what I can to see about fixing that, that piece in the bill. We continue to work on that in committee on Friday. We'll be back at that. I've put forward a number of motions that, you know, we can discuss as the evening goes on. So I've put, I've tabled motions on guaranteed livable income, housing affordability, protecting old growth forests, on long-term care, the role of Canada Post in the green economy, on taxing multinational digital corporations. And I, I think, I guess it's the last time we might have done a town hall. I, I tabled the Private Members Bill to ban the export of thermal coal through Canadian ports. And we're shutting down all our coal-fired generation in Canada. And it makes no sense to be exporting thermal coal. There's two types of coal that has been exported in Canada. Metallurgical coal, which is used for steelmaking, and thermal coal, which is used for generating electricity. And a lot of the thermal coal that we export from British Columbia actually just crosses the border from Washington. It's American coal. We gain nothing by having it flow through our country. And the states, Washington, Oregon, and California, have blocked any coal ports on, in, in their states. But here in Canada, we're accepting this coal for export. And it means that we have a whole bunch of freighters parked out in the, the Salya Sea and the Southern Gulf Islands. And more than 50% of those freighters are coal freighters. The other large chunk of those freighters are grain freighters. And of the, of the coal freighters, about half of them are exporting thermal coal. And about 30% of the, of, of the total are exporting US thermal coal. So banning the, the export of thermal coal would help to partially deal with that problem, but also deal with the climate crisis. Because, you know, we want to see the, the end of burning thermal coal anywhere on the planet to generate electricity. It just doesn't make sense. And it's one of the, those low-hanging fruits to deal with, with climate change. On the freighter issue, I've also been working, I'm gonna, working on solutions to that issue through a vessel arrival system or a just-in-time type of system. The vessel arrival system is something that they have in Australia, where they, they had a similar problem with a lot of freighters anchored, waiting to get into the port. And people complained and complained and complained. And the government did nothing until one of those freighters washed up on a popular beach. And then suddenly, it was an issue that the government wanted to deal with. And now with a vessel arrival system, the vessels need to contact the port when they're 14 days out. And the port will tell them when their arrival time is, whether they need to stay the course and continue at speed, or whether they need to slow down. And when, when these ships slow down, they actually save money. They burn less bunker fuel, they emit less greenhouse gases, and it's actually economical. So when they, when they hurry to get to port, they burn more bunker fuel, release more greenhouse gases, and then sit here and wait at anchorage. And, and they're not burning bunker fuel here, but they're still burning fuel to run their auxiliary engine. So it's not environmentally friendly.
So, yeah, Paul, let's, um, let's hop into talking about the budget. So the federal budget was just, was just tabled. And how did, how did you vote on the budget? And what are your thoughts about the budget?
Well, there was a few things in the budget that I liked, but overall, I wasn't impressed with it. It didn't meet the, the moment that we're in right now. You know, we've seen with this pandemic, people in a crisis, financial crises. We've seen a large number of deaths in long-term care, care homes. We've seen that we don't have proper social programs in place to take care of people. We're in a climate crisis. And so a lot of these things just weren't met by the budget. So one of the things that I'm really happy about is that there's, there's a plan for early childhood education and childcare, universal childcare, which is really important. That's one of the things that is really needed. It's, it's, it's been something that we've called for for a long time. But now, you know, in the pandemic, women, workers have been disproportionately affected. And we need a childcare program in place so that women can get back to work. And it's really important for children too, to get early childhood education. We want options for people who, people who do want to stay at home with kids and homeschool and things like that. But for working parents, paying way too much for childcare is a serious problem. So that was, that was important. We asked for universal pharmacare, but that didn't come through. Where, you know, there's a plan to start, a plan to, to create universal pharmacare. And, and the Liberal Government, the Liberals have been promising universal pharmacare for decades. And so, you know, now is the time to do this, to get this done. It would save money in the system by having a single payer that does bulk buying for the whole country and can negotiate these contracts with big pharmaceutical country companies, instead of, instead of piecemeal by the provinces. There is a strategy in there for really expensive kind of orphan medications to help, help with that, which is crucial. But we need a universal pharmacare program to ensure that people can get the medicine they need when they need it. The other thing we've been asking for for a long time is guaranteed livable income. They've done a few more, you know, piecemeal things to help out workers, like the low-income worker tax credits. But it still misses all kinds of people who, you know, like gig workers. It misses people who take time off to take care of a loved one who's sick or in their last time of their life, their last year of their life. It misses people who, who take time off to get a better education, to, you know, go back to school. And we've seen a lot of people who were missed in the pandemic with the SERB. You know, people who, who had done similar things, like self-employed workers who went on maternity leave and then, you know, didn't earn enough in 2019 to be eligible for the SERB in 2020. It's hardly fair that somebody who's, you know, been working hard and has taken time off, that, that they're not eligible for these programs. And a guaranteed livable income, if it's done properly, would provide an income floor under which no Canadian could fall. It would incentivize people to go to work. And, and so you have an incremental clawback, so there isn't a big clawback when people are, are first, you know, earning money. Like the SERB, you know, as soon as you earned $1,000, you lost your $2,000 SERB. So those kind of things weren't in there. It was, there was no wealth tax in it. So there was some money for affordable housing, but not enough to meet the moment that we're in right now. We're in an affordability crisis. And we need to do more about the kind of predatory practices that are happening with investments in our housing market. We've, we've had, Canadian housing market has been used as a tax haven by the world's ultra-rich who are trying to avoid paying taxes in their home countries. It's been used by organized crime to launder money through our real estate market. And so these things need to be fixed. We need to know who the beneficial owners are of properties. And, and so that people can't use our real estate market as a tax haven. We, so, you know, wealth taxes, there's something that worked in, in the, the budget. And we've seen, you know, companies making huge amounts of money with pandemic response funds and then paying out shareholders and paying out executive bonuses. And a long list of country companies have done this, from like oil companies to the big telecom companies, to long-term care homes, where, where, you know, a lot of our seniors died. And instead of taking the money and improving the, the situation for seniors, they have actually just paid out executive bonuses. It's really unconscionable. And Canada's billionaire class have increased their wealth by $78 billion. You know, you can go and look at the Forbes list to see the who's who of the, of Canada's richest people and how they made money during this crisis. The, the budget's really weak on the opioid crisis. And we know that this is something we need, we, we need to fix. So many people have died of opioid overdoses, 1,700 people since, in BC, since we, you know, we declared an emergency five years ago. And we're still not seeing the action that we need on this. You know, we need, we need to, to see treatment centers. So people, you know, their families don't have to mortgage the house to get treatment for their loved ones. And people, when they, when they are ready for treatment, they can get treatment. We, we need a safe supply. We need to take opioids out of the hands of organized crime and regulate it. Property, the government needs to regulate it. It's regulated by organized crime right now, it needs to be regulated by the government. And we need a safe supply for people. And, and with that safe supply, we have wraparound services, social services to help them, you know, get through whatever is causing the addiction crisis that they have in their lives. Because, you know, when you, when you talk to somebody that's dealing with addiction issues, you'll find that there's an underlying problem there that needs to be worked, worked on. It's either, you know, trauma or social issues. There's, there's things that, that, you know, we, we need to treat it as a social problem and a health problem, not as a, as a criminality problem. The budget was really weak on post-secondary education. You know, we should be looking at tuition, free tuition for post-secondary education. We should be doing what they do in Northern Europe. And that is to invest in human capital. That's something that we don't count, you know, in our GDP as human capital. What is the, what is the value of our workforce? Having an educated workforce, you know, means that we can do so much more with what we have in terms of resources. And, and the Northern European countries have shown this and other countries have shown this, that when you, when you have an educated workforce, your economy booms. And that was, you know, one of the key learnings about the Marshall Plan, when they, when they funded Germany and Japan, that those, those countries had high-educated workforces. And so they were able to take that money and really make, get their economies up and going. And of course, the budget was super weak on climate change. You know, the amount of money put into climate change is basically equal to the amount of money that they're spending on the Trans Mountain Expansion Pipeline, which is $18 billion at this stage. And we've, we've seen reports about that that show that that pipeline is going to be a money loser if the government sticks to its climate commitments. So the only way that pipeline will make money is if the government continues to be a laggard on climate change. And this government and previous governments, going all the way back to all nine of the climate change agreements that Canada has, has signed on to, we have failed. We have failed to meet any of those targets. We have not had plans for any of them except the Paul Martin government. And now this government has a plan, but it's a very weak plan, ticks the can down the road.
So, so that brings us to Bill C12, which is, which was right, was debated, is, is being debated right now in Parliament. It has the, the short and sweet title of "An Act Respecting Transparency and Accountability in Canada's Effort to Achieve Net-Zero Greenhouse Gas Emissions by the Year 2050." So you must love this bill, because...
It completely lacks accountability for this government. I mean, it kicks the can down the road to 2030. So the Paris Agreement, if you read the Paris Agreement, it said that we were supposed to increase our, our climate target in 2020, last year. That's when we were supposed to do that, that we were supposed to have a target set for every five years. So that would mean 2020, 2025, and 2030. And this Accountability Act does not have a target for 2025. So they're gonna do, they're talking about amending it so they can have a review. But even that is, that's super weak. It doesn't commit the government to do anything. It's not going to hold this government accountable. It's not going to hold the next government accountable. It's, and, and when it comes right down to it, it won't hold any government accountable because it's not written in a way that does that. And if you look at other, what other countries have done, like New Zealand or the United Kingdom, they have set carbon budgets and they have set very strong rules. So it doesn't matter who wins the next election, they have to adhere to those rules and they have to follow that carbon budget. And what has happened in the UK? You know, since 1990, you're using 1990 greenhouse gas levels as a benchmark, Canada has increased its greenhouse gas output emissions by 21%. The United Kingdom has reduced theirs by 45%. And they have targets now that, that are much harder. So they have a harder target for 2035. And this is the time that we need to do this. You know, we can all talk about net zero in 2050. But the, the problem is that if we leave all the heavy lifting till later, then it's too late. So we need to, we need to actually have climate action now. And this bill doesn't do it. And it, it doesn't hold the government to account. It's a very weak piece of legislation. And I get to speak to it on Monday.
Okay, and thanks, Paul. I just want to let the people know that we are seeing the, the questions that are coming up in the, in the comment box. And Laurie is passing them to me. And Paul will update a little bit more about the work that's been happening in Parliament. And then we'll start addressing the, the questions that have popped up. So there was a, you know, COVID is on a lot of people's minds. And there was a recent emergency debate on the COVID variants and also discussions about the difference between sort of bending the COVID curve, which was what we were doing, what, what we were told we need to do at the beginning. And now the idea of going to zero COVID, which some, some countries have achieved. So if you can talk a little bit about that.
Sure. So back when this pandemic first arrived in Canada, I started telling the government that we should pay attention to what Taiwan was doing. And I knew what Taiwan was doing because my brother lives there. And they never shut down their economy. You know, he teaches there and he, he stopped teaching for a couple of extra weeks beyond the winter break. They immediately had a mask mandate. So if you're in a public space indoors, you have to wear a mask. And the government doled out three masks a week. At the entrance to every building, there was hand sanitizer. If you wanted to travel regionally, you, you had to have a temperature check and a COVID test. If you were flying into the country, you went into mandatory quarantine. Sorry, there's just no way around it. You're going into, into quarantine. None of this, you know, find your way home and, and self-regulate. And they, you know, they've, they've had less than 20 deaths in Taiwan. At the beginning of the pandemic, they were in the top 10 countries affected by COVID. Now they're listed as 191. And they, they've managed to take it to zero. They are an island. So is New Zealand, which has taken it to zero. So has Australia, but also Vietnam. Also Thailand's done a really good job. Also South Korea. And all of them had national strategies to deal, to deal with COVID and a plan to get to zero. Not a yo-yo plan of like shutting down, opening up, shutting down, opening up, which is the plan that we're on, which is just to, to try to not have too many people, you know, in our hospitals or in our ICUs. They had a get-to-zero plan. And what they did was they, when, when a case came up, they would have a, create a red zone. So if there was a case in Nanaimo, we would become a red zone, we would be locked down. But that wouldn't mean that Victoria was locked down. It would be in a green zone. And now you can fly between Australia and, and New Zealand. And in the airports, they have green zones in the airports where they know it's COVID-free and travelers who are COVID-free can travel back and forth. People flying into the country from other places, fly into the red zone of the airport and it goes straight to quarantine. No ifs, ands, or buts. And, you know, they're, those countries are open right now. I'm jealous. People are going out to concerts and they're, they're going to the pub and they're visiting with their families and friends and not living in a lockdown. And here, we've been doing this yo-yo thing. So, you know, we, we, we were mentioning these plans all along and we, you know, from the very beginning. It took a long time to get a mask mandate here. I don't like wearing a mask. Nobody likes wearing a mask. But, you know, when you think about air propelling from your mouth, it actually, the basic physics of it is it slows down that air. And it's not the panacea, it's not everything, you know, it's a multi-pronged approach. There is no silver bullet, there's only silver buckshot. But, but when we saw the variants starting to arise back in November, we asked for an emergency debate. And then when we saw the variants spreading in Canada, in February, February 1st, we asked for an emergency debate again. And then last week, we asked for another emergency debate, we finally got one. But, you know, we're doing this too late. We get these variants of interest, we let them spread around the country. Then we decided they're variants of concern. And now we need to lock everything down again. And, you know, it's, it's, it's punishing our economy. Why, I debated with the Parliamentary Secretary about this when I was, you know, talking about why we don't have a national strategy. We had talked about the use of the Emergencies Act, the Public Welfare part of the Emergencies Act, which is actually a very good piece of legislation. The Emergencies Act replaced the War Measures Act, which was a bad piece of legislation. But it was developed when there was no emergency. And so it was, the bill was scrutinized and worked over by the opposition until they got it right. And it, it really, it creates a situation where the provinces have to work together. And where we could have had red zones and, and green zones and stopped people from traveling from province to province. We have constitutional rights to travel between provinces. We have a lot of, we have a lot of rights. And I'm not one for taking away those, those rights or diminishing them. But we, you know, this process of, of locking down is, it's causing a lot, a lot of problems. We've had 23,000 people, 24,000 people die in this country. 180,000 businesses, small and medium-sized businesses are on the verge of closing forever. We have, you know, a domestic violence epidemic, you know, intimate partner violence. We have suicide rates are up, opioid overdoses are up. There's a mental health crisis going on because of this pandemic. And if we just had dealt with it to, and had had a plan to get to zero, our border is closed, is supposed to be closed, but we have so many loopholes that allow people to get in. We have so many loopholes on international travel. People fly in and, and wander off to, to self-isolate. You know, we worked really hard to get people back into this country, to get constituents back into this country when the pandemic first started. And we should have just stuck with the plan so that we could have opened up our economy. Yes, we wouldn't have been able to go to Mexico for Christmas, but we would be able to go and have Christmas dinner with our relatives. You know, I think that the way we've done this has been, has been highly problematic. And we've been talking about this for a while. And I'm, I'm like the rest of, the rest of everybody else. I'm tired of it, tired of the lockdowns. Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks, Paul. And so I am gonna, I'm gonna share a screen to show the, the motions that you have put up. And if you want to say a couple of words on, on the different motions. And yes, I'll just share the screen here. Here we go. Are you seeing that?
I can see it. So, yeah, are you gonna click on different ones or you just want me to go through them?
I can click on different ones here.
So this is where you can go if you want to see the work that I do. And if you think of... So this is where you can go if you wanna see the work that I do, and if you take, actually, take a back a step there, Alan, and you can see there, yeah, and then you click on my work. And you can see all the interventions that I've had in the House of Commons, all my interventions in committee, the bills that I've tabled, and all the ones that I've jointly seconded. And I've seconded private members' bills from members of all the different parties, Liberals, Conservatives, NDP, and Bloc. And same with the motions. So I've I've tabled six motions, and I've jointly seconded thirteen of those. And then I had ninety-eight votes in the chamber, and you can see, you can see all my votes. And so this is where you can, you know, check the record, see what I've done, where I, what I've said on.
So is there a specific, a specific motion that you wanna talk about a little bit between, or a couple of motions?
Well, motion sixty-five is guaranteed livable income. I've already talked about that. Motion sixty-six is the one I did on on the housing crisis. And, you know, housing is a human right, and we we recognize that through international law, the UN Declaration on Human Rights, and is recognized in our National Housing Strategy. It's been affirmed in different conventions that we've signed on to. But we have a serious crisis, and, you know, one point eight million Canadian households spend more than thirty percent of their income. That, by the way, is the threshold. And, you know, two point three million Canadians have core housing need, meaning that they need an affordable place to live. So I looked at a bunch of the different structural issues that we're, that we're having with with housing. And so, you know, I list the problems, but then what needs to be done about it? The government should recognize housing affordability and homelessness as twin national crises, redefine affordable housing using a better updated formula. And the reason for that is the, you know, what is affordable housing in Vancouver now? Who knows, you know? And it's, there's, so, you know, there's the low end of the scale, and there's the median, and and the high end of the scale, and what is affordable. And so we need, we need to be able to calculate that better. We need to de-mort or regulate foreign investments in residential real estate. We need to remove the tax exemption for real estate investment trusts unless they're being used to protect affordable housing units. And what hap, what's happening right now is there's financialization of our housing market. And there's small real estate investment trusts, and there's large ones, and very large ones. And the large ones are are creating monopolies in some markets. And they are using predatory practices of buying up affordable housing stock. And where there's no rent controls, they jack up the rent as high as they want. And where there are rent controls, they they do rent, rent evictions or demo evictions. They clear out the tenants and then create more expensive housing. And so we can't build our way out of this crisis by spending taxpayers' money if that's what's happening to the existing affordable housing stock.
And this is a good moment to mention also that in two weeks, on May twelfth, you are going to have a community conversation with the journalists with the discourse, with the Nanaimo discourse, Julie Chadwick, who and you, the two of you will be discussing the series that Julie Chadwick has written about housing and homelessness and housing affordability or lack thereof in Nanaimo. And I'll mention that at the end as well. Is there maybe one more other motion that you wanna discuss here?
Well, I talked about the improvements in long-term care, the protection of old growth forests. We know that's a big issue on the West Coast here with the logging of the, you know, there's not very much old growth left. Taxing multinational digital giants is is one, you know, where they're collecting all this data on us. And what I think we need to do is tax the amount of data that they collect, tax the advertising revenue that they glean from advertising within this country, and make them pay GST as well. The the role of Canada Post in the green economy is an interesting one. This is a proposal that was put forward by the Canadian Union of Postal Workers a number of years ago. And they they have some interesting proposals. One is, you know, to create a renewable energy postal fleet, have charging stations and electric vehicles at, for electric vehicles at the post offices, have postal banking that provides inclusive financial services, especially to those underserved by the commercial banks, like rural and many indigenous communities. So banks have left lots of communities, but they still have a post office. And postal banking is something that happens in many, many countries around the world. In fact, you'd be surprised to know that the Canadian Pension and Plan Investment Board has invested hundreds of millions of dollars in the Chinese postal bank. So we don't have postal banking here, and we could have that. It's a form of public banking so that the interest paid goes back into the public system and stays in the community rather than going to big banks that go and invest it in the fossil fuel industry, which is what our big banks do. Door-to-door mail carriers checking in on seniors and people with mobility issues, keeping more people in their own homes for longer. And that would, you know, that would require some kind of setup just to ensure that that there's a system in place or so. You know, often seniors are alone, alone at home, and we just have some kind of system in place that we would need to work out those details. Post offices as community hubs for digital access and social innovation, connecting communities and climate-friendly businesses to customers. And so so much of rural Canada, and even like, what I mean rural Canada, I mean just outside of Nanaimo, there's, there's a lack of high-speed internet, and so you could have these kind of digital hubs. And then consolidation of last-mile delivery service that eases congestion in urban centers and reduces the environmental impact in our, in our cities. So I thought that this was an interesting proposal and put it forward as a motion. I've also, there's another kind of motion that I've tabled in the House of Commons, and these are unanimous consent motions. Other parties table lots of these. Most, you know, some of the, some parties use these as kind of a political tool just to put forward a motion that they know won't pass, and then they have a press release ready to go saying, nobody else believes in our program to do this and that. We're the only ones, and it only takes one MP to shut down a unanimous consent motion. So when they ask for unanimous consent, one MP says nope, then that's it, doesn't pass. I got a unanimous consent motion through to help UK pensioners in Canada. And UK pensioners in Canada have had their pensions frozen. So some people who've been, you know, pensioners in Canada for thirty years are are getting a tiny fraction of what their pension should be when they should be earning a lot more. And if they were in the UK or in the United States or in a long list of other countries, they would be getting what their pensions are worth. And when you think about it, your pension, you pay into your pension. That's your money, and that's a social contract that you have with the government. And this is seniors' abuse. This is like elders' abuse, and it's theft. And the people who have served the UK government, who have been in their military, who have gone to war for the UK government, aren't getting their proper pensions. And the UK government refuses to to have an agreement with Canada to to have their pensions indexed and and increased and paid out property. And they've done, they've done this with a number of countries, surprisingly, you know, a bunch of Commonwealth countries. It's kind of treating Canada like like we're a colony still because they they don't do this with the United States. And they just renegotiated all their pensions with the European Union. And so I got unanimous consent basically from the the House of Commons to to pass this motion saying that the that the UK government needs to pay their their seniors and their pensioners in Canada property. And it got a bunch of media in the UK and caught some attention there. And it's an issue that there's about three thousand UK pensioners living in this riding and 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 probably about twenty thousand on Vancouver Island. So there's a lot of people that are affected by this.
Okay, thanks, Paul. And so Bill C-ten, you did mention at the beginning that there's a bit of a kerfuffle. We, there have been several questions about it in in the chat, and there were a few questions that came earlier during the day on Facebook from Heather, Tina, and Leanne, and several questions about the chat in relation to free speech and threats of Bill C-ten on relating to free speech. So can you talk a little bit about that?
So Bill C-ten is an update to the Broadcasting Act, and it's a flawed piece of legislation. I've got twenty-seven amendments into Bill C-ten. We've gone through seventeen of those amendments so far, and four of them have passed. There's one hundred and twenty-seven amendments to this bill. In the bill, in in the, in the very beginning of the bill and the definitions, there's an exclusion on carrying on a broadcasting undertaking. And it basically says, "A person who uses a social media service to upload programs for transmission over the internet and reception by other users of the service, and who is not the provider of the service or the provider's affiliate or agent or mandatory of either of them, does not, by fact of that use, carry on a broadcasting undertaking for the purposes of this act." That is an exclusion for for you, I, and everybody else putting stuff up on the, on the internet. We are not under undertaking a broadcasting, we're not a broadcasting undertaking as defined by the act. Now, this clause, a similar clause came up later in the bill. And just to be clear, like, I'm not an official member of the committee because we don't have official party status. I can put forward amendments, and I can debate my own amendments. I can speak to them, and, but I can't vote, I can't vote for my own amendments. And so this came up, and this next little section was taken out. And this, this is how it reads, "Non-application Certain Programs." So this, this act does not apply in respect of programs that are uploaded to an online undertaking that provides a social media service by a user of the service who is not the provider of the service or the provider's affiliate or the agent or mandatory or either of them for transmission over the internet and reception by other users of the service. So it sounds exactly the same, except we're talking now about a program rather than a person using the service. The second part of this is that this does not apply to online undertakings whose broadcasting consists only of such programs. So those programs that we're putting up. I put up a video. That's a program. As a person using social media to put up, to upload programs, I'm not covered by the act. But this section specifically talks about the programs, not the people. And what happened was, while we were going through this, one of the the Liberal members thought that this was a redundant clause and said, well, we should just call this whole clause. And they passed it on division, which means that nobody asked for a recorded vote. And if you watch committee processes, committee members who oppose or who have an opposing view will say, I want a recording vote so that you can see that I oppose this. The Conservatives didn't oppose this. Nobody's, nobody said anything about it. And it was the the analysis of this that was read to the committee right beforehand by the by one of the officials, that basically said that that now when you, this means under the act, then when you put a program up, that that program is covered as a broadcasting undertaking, or could be. So a lot of hay is being made of this by the Conservatives right now. I'm gonna see if I can get this language put back in because I think it's important that, you know, we're, we have freedom, freedom of use of the internet. It, you know, it wouldn't make a lot of sense in a democratic society to be going through all of, all of these posts and determining, you know, what, like, what is you know, what is worthy of the internet and what is not, so much stuff that gets uploaded all the time. And it would, you know, in the language of this, it's not about censorship. It's really about saying that, you know, does it fit CanCon regulations? Is it discoverable as Canadian program and the other things that are related to the act? Already, there's a responsibility on the part of broadcasters, and there should be a responsibility on the part of social media platforms to ensure that they're not disseminating hate speech, spreading hate speech. So that's already covered under the criminal code, not under this. So it's created, it's created kind of, it's been kind of weaponized, I'd say. But I think it's, it's something that does need to be fixed under the act. And, you know, if the act isn't fixed properly, then I'm not gonna support it.
So you mentioned that you cannot debate other amendments in committee. Why is that? Like, is that, why is it that you can't debate on committees? What what's, what's going on there?
Well, I have to ask for another member of Parliament to give me their time. But during, it just depends on the committee. So because we don't have official party status, there's these archaic rules in the House of Commons. So if you don't have twelve MPs, and we're the only Westminster parliament to do this, if you don't have twelve MPs, you don't have official party status, you're not an official party, that which means that you don't have standing in committees, which is just nonsense.
Yeah, they're not actually archaic rules because the older parliaments in the Westminster system don't have this. And the other parties, they're actually kind of modern and non-democratic rules, I would say.
And it's, it's ridiculous because when you think about it, the Green Party got one point two million votes in the last election. Just one-fifth of what the Liberals got, or one-fifth of what the Conservatives got. But the Liberals got fifty times more seats. So one hundred and fifty, you know, seats to three for the Greens, and the Conservatives got forty times more seats. And all the power, and they have the power in these committees. And so I can speak in committee if I can get another MP to give me time, and so I do that. I work on on these things. So if I want to question a certain witness. But actually, often what I'll do is I'll just, I'll have my own meetings with with these organizations. And so that's what I do with Bill C-twelve. I had a whole series of meetings with organizations that actually went to committee to testify, but it meant I could ask as many questions as I wanted and get down to the number of what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, for Bill C-ten. Okay, so now we have a lot of questions, and that was, there were a bunch about Bill C-ten, and you've responded to those. And now I'll go to the next question. This one came, this one came from Lloyds. How about a discussion on glyphosate roundup? It's killing us all.
Hey. Well, it just so happens that I seconded a private members' bill by my caucus colleague, Jenica Hatton from New Brunswick, where there's a lot of concern about glyphosate as well. So that is to to ban the use of glyphosate in this country and and products like Roundup. And we, we know from studies that it's a probable carcinogen and that it's got a lot of other suspected health effects. And it's also, you know, for here in our forests, it's create, it creates monoculture forests that are then really susceptible to wildfire. We wonder why, you know, wildfires rip through B.C. forests? Well, because they're monocultures and they're, and the trees that are killed off by glyphosate are actually the deciduous trees that are, that are fire-resistant. So in the interior, aspen and cottonwood are fire-resistant. And you can see in areas that have just been devastated by wildfire, aspen standing there with their beams on. And here, on the West Coast, alder and maple are fire-resistant. I don't know if you've ever had a campfire, and you try to put a piece of green alder in or try to light a fire with green alder. You're not gonna get anywhere. If you try to light a fire with with some cut-up green cedar, you're not gonna be able to do it. And with the cedar needles, right, they they light up like candles. But alder, alder is fire-resistant, and so is maple. And, you know, if we left that to grow on the side of logging roads, we would have natural fire barriers all over the province for wildfire. And when it, when it's dispersed in the, in a forest, like if you go into a, into a tree farm, which is a monoculture tree farm, I'm reticent to call it a forest. There's, there's little, very little undergrowth. There's very little greenery. There's, there's little, very little undergrowth. There's very little greenery. And when you go into a natural forest, it's a mixed forest and there will be, you know, all kinds of different trees and, and underbrush to grow. And so that's why we need to get rid of glyphosate.
Okay, we're gonna go to the next question and we're gonna do about two to three minutes per section, per question because we have quite a Oh, no, 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 that was perfect. But that's why I stopped you there. And so Shamsen is concerned that the Finance Minister sits on the Board of Trustees of the World Economic Forum. Do you know about that? And he feels that that's a conflict of interest to Canadian citizens. Are you aware of that? I was not aware of that.
I wasn't aware of that, but um, you would, I'm not a big fan of the World Economic Forum. And uh, you know, they, they, it's a club of billionaires and big corporations and uh, the, the finance ministers and uh, prime ministers go there to these fancy meetings in Dallas, Switzerland and, and uh, you know, every year they have a, a, a theme. So back in twenty eleven, when Stephen Harper was there, the Great Transformation. And now it's the Great Reset. And there are these plans, they talk about, they talk a good game about climate change and about helping those most in need in the world, but they're mostly there celebrating things like, you know, when Donald Trump was there, they were really excited about his one point three trillion dollar tax cut to multinational corporations and the world's wealthy. Got really excited about that. So that's, you know, their agenda is more about, about cutting taxes for the rich, about accumulating wealth and about, about basically controlling, uh, you know, the wealth of the, on the planet and consolidating. And so I take a lot of what they say with a grain of salt when they talk about things like climate change or about uh, about um, eating the world starving population. Yeah, it's an undemocratic body and um,
That's a, that's a good, that's a good place to stop. It's an undemocratic body and a club for billionaires. And Cindy was asking, can you please ask for the minimum Trudeau said is needed to survive for a person with disabilities? Is it two thousand dollars a month? And I'm not sure exactly if Cindy's asking for advocacy here or for your thoughts about, um, what's the minimum for, for a person with disabilities to survive?
That, you know, that question depends on where you are. Right? Because um, in, in Vancouver or Toronto, it's super expensive to live. And then Iwo's getting very expensive too. So you know, when I talk about a guaranteed livable income, um, I also talk about the need to actually have a top up for people who uh, face challenges in their lives and, and need more services. They need, you know, accessibility tools. They, they, they don't have the ability to work the same way that other people work. But people with diverse abilities, disabilities do have the ability to contribute to society in so many ways. And I know a lot of people with diverse abilities who volunteer in our community and, and add a lot of value to our communities. And I, and I think that they need to give, be given a fair income to live and more than what the guaranteed livable income would be. And it's probably in the, in the range, like in the NIMMO, it would be um, in the range of, of twenty four hundred dollars a month or something like that, I think.
Okay, thanks Paul. Yeah, thank you, Paul. Uh, the next question comes from Hugh. Uh, what's Canada's stance on patent waivers for vaccines? Do you think that that might help vaccinate more people faster?
Yeah, it would help, help people a lot faster. That, what you're talking about is the uh, the trips, it's the WTO, the World Trade Organization, trade uh, related intellectual properties, uh, portion of the trade agreement. And so these patents that are held by pharmaceutical companies, if they release those patents for the vaccines, then vaccine manufacturers all over the world would be able to ramp up production. And they should do that because uh, all of these vaccine manufacturers, the like, AstraZeneca, um, et cetera, et cetera. They've all, they've all gotten huge subsidies from government. And we're paying a premium for the vaccines that are being produced by Pfizer and Moderna and AstraZeneca. Be, you know, because we've pre-ordered at a certain price, but we've also pumped billions of dollars into uh, vaccine research during this pandemic. And, and they should release the patents so that generic drug producers in countries around the world, and there's lots of them, uh, and generic vaccine producers could be producing vaccines. It's, I think it would be, it's not just the right thing to do. It's, it's the proper thing to do. And you know, I think it was Moderna is looking at a seventeen billion dollar profit this year and Pfizer's looking at a fifteen billion dollar profit this year from, you know, COVID vaccines. It's unconscionable that they would hold on to those patents and not deal with this pandemic equally in low-income countries because if we don't do that, what happens is new variants come because it just continues to spread. And uh, people get more than one type of COVID at the same time. You, you get new variants happening and uh, it just bounces back to us and it becomes a self-financed, you know, endless, endless money for the vaccine producers.
Yeah. Okay, the next question comes from Dirk. Um, was there anything in the budget and/or is there a federal plan to help the homeless population in the NIMMO?
There is money in the budget for homelessness. I think it was one point two, one, I'd have to look it up again. There's more money going into the Rapid Housing Initiative. Oof, um, there's more money coming for homelessness. There's more money coming through the Reaching Home Program. And Reaching Home, what happens is the money comes to the United Way here and they split that out into all the different organizations in the community. And we've had a lot of money come into the NIMMO and the Mid-Islands through Reaching Home. So there's a big influx of money for that. Um, and then for affordable housing, uh, two point five billion over seven years. Including one point five billion for Rapid Housing Initiative. Um, at least twenty five percent of which will be towards uh, women-focused affordable housing.
That's in the general budget, obviously. That's not just
That's in the general budget. So I mean, the way these, the way these programs work is that um, with, the money goes into CMHC. Some of that money goes to the province. A lot of the, a lot of the housing money goes to B C housing. So you, you know, we don't really see the federal flow of money into the, into the riding. It goes to B C housing and gets dispersed there. But there, there are streams uh, through CMHC that housing organizations can apply to. And so it's up to those organizations to make those applications. And there are a number of organizations in the community that I know that are applying for CMHC. And every time we get an announcement about funding that becomes available and a new program, I send it out to all the different organizations and let them know that the money's there. And I, you know, I'm here to help, help with uh, writing letters of support. I can't, you know, we, politically, we can't intervene in that process. It's all supposed to be arms length. But yeah, we definitely need uh, more money. There was a billion dollars put into the Rapid Housing Initiative in the last round and there was four point six billion dollars worth of applications. Uh, over seven hundred uh, applications for funding from organizations across the country.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Um, the next question came from Kim. How is the federal government going to address the need for safe supply for all substance users, not just opioid users?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I mean, we, we have in front of us a piece of legislation now. I'd have to look up what the bill number is, C twenty five, I can't remember. I could look it up for you now, but basically it's a big letdown because uh, it's, it's changes to the Controlled Drugs and Substances Act and changes to other um, criminal justice reform, but it doesn't, it, it doesn't uh, it doesn't even touch this. And that, and so we know that there needs to be a safe supply for other drugs as well because they are also tainted, like methamphetamines and cocaine are also tainted by um, uh, toxic chemicals. So you know, that, that is part of the, what, what I've been advocating for is to decriminalize all drugs, provide a safe supply for people, for users who are dealing with addiction issues, have wraparound services that are attached to that safe supply. Uh, so people get the help that they need. Uh, you know, for housing, for finding work, for stabilizing their lives, for getting treatment, all of those things. Lots of people can have addiction issues and, and function in life. The problem is that, that um, the stigmatization that comes with, with uh, addiction or drug use and also the crim, that, that, that um, they're having to deal with through a criminal element. And that's just problematic. We, you know, I just heard a report on, on the news that some like fifty percent of uh, of people who've died of opioid overdoses are, are um, young men, you know, working men. And um, you know, it's not, it's not what people think about necessarily when they think about addicts. They think about people they see on the street. But they are people that you wouldn't suspect. And it's, and it's come from uh, the use of painkillers uh, which, you know, the pharmaceutical industry let loose on the market, uh, knowing full well that they're, that they were addicted. And um, oxycodone and et cetera, et cetera. So we need to decriminalize all drugs. We need to deal with a safe supply issue. We need wraparound services. We need to help people with, with this social and health issue.
Thanks, Paul. Emma asked, there was an eviction, there was a freeze on eviction rentals in the first wave of COVID nineteen. Can we have an eviction rental freeze again in this third wave, please? She has just been evicted for June thirtieth.
I'm really sorry to hear that. That's uh, that's terrible news. This, that comes under the Provincial Landlord Tendency Act. And uh, it was the provincial government that sets those, those um, addiction or eviction freezes. Uh, we've been calling for um, rental relief for people that, that face eviction um, from a, through a federal program, but we haven't had any uptake on the, from the federal government. But I would, I would, you know, suggest that you should talk to your MLA and, and press them on this because nobody should be getting evicted during this third wave. Absolutely not. It's not, it's not fair at all. People are, people are struggling financially and now is not the time to be having people.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Um, the, Kim asked, um, the feds have eighteen billion dollars over five years earmarked for building strong indigenous communities. Does this include addressing racism in Canada's healthcare system?
That is a good question. I have, that's like uh, digging into a detail that I have not looked into. I know that I did read, um, because it's a fairly long section of the budget that I read through. There are things around cultural safety and, and cultural, hopefully appropriate um, uh, healthcare. But again, healthcare is um, a provincial issue. And um, so there's a, there's kind of a mix there of, you know, federal responsibility for indigenous people, but the province is running the actual healthcare system.
Yeah, yeah, I guess that, that's a, that's a question that'll take some digging. It's not a question that you can answer on the fly. And the, the budget was, I think, seven hundred pages, was it?
Yeah, like, I got sort of a double-sided version of it without the appendices here.
Yeah.
I could look it up for you now.
Uh, I, I don't think we have actually time for that because there's still quite a few questions to go and only twenty five minutes left in, in here.
There is one, health outcomes for indigenous communities. Distinctions-based mental wellness strategies.
All right, I think we'll have to get back to that one. Perhaps, Kim, if you want to send that by email to paul-manley@parl.gc.ca, we can perhaps give you a fuller response by email. Um, A asks, to be fully protected, we need two shots. When is the end date for the second booster for us? That's kind of a provincial question here in B C.
Yeah, I mean, the answer to this one keeps on changing, doesn't it? It was supposed to be a shorter period of time and now they're talking about four months between, between shots and the pharmaceutical companies have recommended one thing and different jurisdictions are doing other things. And so this is a question ready for the provincial government because uh, the federal government is procuring the vaccines, distributing to them, to the provinces and then the provinces are following their own programs and it changes from province to province how we're dealing with this.
Okay, Matthew asked, um, where do you stand on the sexual misconduct allegations against retired General Jonathan Vance? What is your opinion on adding civilian oversight to serious allegations such as sexual misconduct in the forces?
I think it's really important to have independent bodies uh, to do these investigations because we've seen what's happened in this situation with General Vance. It's completely unacceptable. And you know, the, the, the disturbing thing about this and the heartbreaking thing about this is that so many cases were not dealt with properly. And you know, I had a woman contact our office and I met with her super briefly, but she came in with a whole box full of documents. And she was completely triggered by this because she was assaulted on a base. Her son was assaulted uh, because she reported it. And uh, you know, her son was, was, was uh, dealing with abuse from other kids because because his mother had reported this. And the RCMP officer didn't handle it properly at all and uh, kind of, you know, said, said something to her along the lines of like, you know, you gotta give a guy a break because you're a pretty, you're a pretty woman, right? And later on, that RCMP officer was charged. And so, you know, this isn't just, this isn't just within our armed forces. This is something that's been happening in the RCMP that we know about as well. And, and women's complaints need to be taken seriously. They need to be investigated seriously and they need to be investigated at arms length. They cannot be within the chain of command of any of these organizations. This is, you know, straight up, I'm, I'm with you a hundred percent on that.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Um, Phil wanted to know, um, is, is your caucus able to work cooperatively across party lines or is the party system just too committed to an adversarial system in parliament?
No, you know, we work across party lines. I um, I make a point of it um, to reach out, well, you know, with my amendments and in uh, committee, I reach out to all the other MPs and have conversations with, with um, other MPs. There's things that we agree on and, and uh, work together on and um, it, you know, it is a super toxic workplace. I'll give it that. It is. But I try to just rise above that and um, you know, I don't engage in heckling. I, I don't engage in hyper partisan behavior. I, I, you know, been frustrated by things before, but the, you know, the, the, the parties need to work together to get legislation through in a minority parliament. And you know, the, the opposition parties have worked together to hold the government to account on a number of occasions. You know, all of the opposition parties have voted for uh, motions that have been put forward on opposition days by the different opposition parties to hold the government to account. And uh, we have also worked with the government on legislation that we think is important. And that's just all part of the process. And that's just all part of the process. I, I, there is some hyper partisanship. And different, different MPs have different levels of that hyper partisan kind of nature. Some are easier to work with than others.
Yeah. Okay, Richard asks, are there any thoughts on improving our immigration process? The agency keeps people waiting forever without any recourse or real means of communicating with them, even for Canadian citizens sponsoring. His wife took eight years and his daughter, and is now in year two, is saying it's kind of crazy. And we, we've heard of other people, of course, and we get people conducting the office on a regular basis.
Yeah, the immigration process is super slow and, and it's even worse under COVID. But, you know, Richard waiting eight years to get your wife here, that's to, to get through the immigration process. That's an unacceptable amount of time. And I don't know if you, if you've talked directly to staff in my office about your particular case, but we do advocate for people uh within the system and try to help out where we can. And um, there's a massive backlog. And it's, you know, it's about prioritizing uh resources, really, to, to get these things done.
Yeah, but I would definitely uh say, Richard and anybody out, out there, if you are um encountering uh roadblocks with federal agencies, uh always like a call um Paul's office or email us and we can often, um, we have sort of the back channels to a lot of the agencies. So we don't have to call the same number that you call and sit for, for hours listening to Muzak. Um, we can actually, we can actually get through quicker and we can often find out the status of, of applications and sometimes flag things and, and get things moving faster. So um, the office phone number is two five zero seven three four six four zero zero. And the email is paul-manley@parl, that's the first four letters of parliament, P-A-R-L dot G-C dot C-A. And you can find all that information at paul-manleymp.ca. Um, Bill wanted to know, uh, or asked, do you agree that the federal government needs to give retired people automatic pharmacare on medication?
Yeah, that's what, what we're asking for is universal pharmacare.
For everybody.
For everybody. Um, it's, you know, that, a universal pharmacare program would save money in our healthcare system. It would save money uh because you'd have a single payer uh being able to negotiate uh contracts for the whole country with the pharmaceutical industry. And, and it saves money in the, in the healthcare system, because when people don't take their, their medicine that they're prescribed, it ends up exacerbating problems, creating more problems, and they end up in the emergency room. They end up with other issues going on and, and that costs the healthcare system more money. So uh, we are the only country that has universal healthcare that doesn't have universal pharmacare. You know, what is the holdup? How come we keep on waiting for this? It's been promised over and over again. And we just need to get it done. It's one of the
And there is a majority of, there is a majority of parties and MPs right now in the House of Commons that have stated that they're, that they support pharmacare. Is there not?
There is. And it's promised again in the budget. There's just nothing committed to it, except for having a conversation with the provinces and for, for dealing with uh some of the really expensive uh medicines like tricafda, things like that, to try to help specific people.
Okay, we have a few more questions and getting to the last fifteen minutes. Um, Virat wanted to know, is there any chance that you can try to get some funds as a grant for city count, for the city council proposed waterfront walkway and park in Nanaimo? If possible, can you please try?
So, the process for infrastructure funding is that the city needs to apply. And um, I talked to the two city managers about, about uh the, the program. And I've let them know when the, you know, what funding is available. And they have gotten some money for bike lanes and they've gotten money for other things. So the city just needs to, to apply to those infrastructure funds. And I'm more than happy to write letters of support. Um, I can't interfere in the system. You know, but uh, that's, that is the process.
Okay, and Bill wanted to ask, um, do you have any thoughts on federal funding to the Island Corridor Foundation that was promised years ago? Will we see any money for the ENN rail line?
Yeah, who, who promised the funding would be one thing? And, and again, this is a process of um you know, prioritization. The problem right now with Island Corridor Foundation is that now it's First Nation is litigating against Island Corridor Foundation. There are other First Nations, uh Staminus, which is, you know, not happy. Stenane was not happy. All, all of these, the railway runs through reserve land, runs through reserve communities. And, you know, this is part of that whole colonial kind of thing where um colonial governments had no problems running highways and railways through the land that was set aside. You know, the small parts of the land set aside as reserve lands. And so people shouldn't be surprised now that First Nations aren't very happy about that. And so Island Corridor Foundation needs to work this out with uh, with those First Nations. Because that's what's going to hold up the process of uh, for funding if there's litigation on the table. If it's in the court system, it's just, it's not going anywhere.
Okay, Tyler asked, Paul, do you see the government making the doubling of the community work funds for local governments permanent rather than a one-off?
I don't know exactly what the government's going to do with that, but, but, you know, I think that um it's a good, good program to continue funding, so it would be a, a matter of advocating. And um uh, I always encourage local government to advocate and to CC me, so I could back up their advocacy with ministers. And it actually helps me um to advocate. I'm not just talking about something kind of out of the blue. I'm actually backing up what municipalities are asking for. And, and the same goes with local organizations and, and local citizens, right? So um, it's important, you know, to, to um advocate.
Okay, Heather is worried about the possible vaccine injuries and wondering, how will the government support vaccine injuries down the road?
That's a good question. I mean, we have a, we have a healthcare system to take care of people when they are injured or when they have health issues. But uh, you know, like anything, vaccines aren't uh one hundred percent for everybody, right? So um, yeah, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure.
Okay, uh, last two questions and then we'll wrap up. So Dawn, um, I think the government should have programs to educate citizens on how to optimize our natural immunity. Uh, there's a huge amount of money that's being given to drug companies. What's your opinion about that?
I agree. I sponsored a petition along those lines. And um, the, you know, the response was that uh the federal government, the Canada Health Act, they, they give the provinces money for core health. And then the provinces determine what they do beyond those core health needs. So, you know, uh proactive health, um, all, all kinds of different therapies like chiropractic acupuncture, massage therapy, physiotherapy, et cetera, um, naturopathy, all of those things. It's up to the provinces just to decide what they fund. And I don't know if you ever watched the House of Commons, but the amount of kind of fighting back and forth about just send the provinces more cash. Certain MPs will say that. Uh, especially for Quebec, but also for Alberta. And, you know, there, there's this hands off approach. Ottawa, leave us alone, just send us a check. Um, and we'll determine how we spend it. So there's this constant struggle in terms of setting national standards. And the national standards are something I, I push for a lot, like long-term care, universal pharmacare, having uh universal childcare and um, but these things all need to be worked out with provinces. Different provinces and different governments have a different ideological viewpoint.
Yeah, yeah, there are uh different levels of government. And uh, we do actually often get people contacting us about like, you know, what's going on with, we even like sometimes get people saying like, what's going on with this building in this corner? Or how come, you know, there's a culvert next to my house and stuff like that? So there are, and sometimes people get really upset when we explain to them that you are a federal representative. And so you actually don't deal with uh, with an issue of like a municipal zoning issue or something like that. People get upset and they feel that it's a passing of the buck, but there are different levels of government in Canada. And it, it's kind of constitutionally mandated, uh, who has responsibilities for what, some of it. And some other stuff has just been legislated that way. And so, yeah, there are, there, there's, there's some good videos out there in YouTube land that, that explain some of that stuff. And um, we've been going through some of that stuff with your Youth Advisory Council, which actually we could mention, but let's go first to the last question that we're taking from uh, from YouTube commenters. Hugh asks, could you speak to what the budget is doing with the CRB, the Canada Response Benefit? Are they lowering the amount for people who are unemployed due, due to the pandemic down to three hundred dollars this summer? Three hundred dollars per week this summer?
Yeah, there's a cutoff. I can't remember what it is. It's after eight weeks or something like that. It goes from five hundred down to, to three hundred, and that's something that we don't think is fair at all. I'd have to find, I can't remember what the exact cutoff point on that was, but it's just not a fair, this is not fair. I mean, people aren't, if people aren't working and there's lots of workers who are still struggling, lots of communities are still struggling, depending on what, you know, what is the main economic generator uh in those communities. So there is a cutoff, yeah, where it's going from five hundred down to three hundred um per week.
Yeah. I don't think that, I, I don't think that the last seven minutes of this meeting are the time when you're gonna find the exact spot in the seven hundred page document. But um, as we wrap up, actually, this is a good moment to actually mention the Youth Advisory Council. And uh, do you want to talk a little bit about the Youth Advisory Council?
Sure, I was just looking through my calls notes version of the budget for the CRB, but I like to be able to answer questions, Alan. Um, so the Youth Advisory Council is open for youth age fifteen to twenty-five. And uh, you know, it's a, it's a place where it's, it's nonpartisan. We, it's kind of driven by the, by the youth, what we do, like, so we have different goals about uh activities that we want to do. So uh, the youth wanted to learn about senators, so we invited uh one of the B.C. senators to come and speak for an hour and tell us about the whole process of the Senate. Right now, we asked about like looking, if you want to examine legislation or how to do petitions or different aspects of government governance. Um, so as Alan was saying, we've been looking at what, what the roles of different levels of government are. Also the municipal, uh provincial and federal. And then um
Right now, we're talking about
Bill C twelve right now. So they're all like reading the bill and reading, you know, different um perceptions of it. Yeah, opinions about it. So, you know, we've shared articles from across the spectrum, so that, that you can have a, have a look and, and kind of make up their own minds. And then we're just discussing, discussing it.
Yeah, and so anybody, if, if you know, if you're connected with any youth that you think might be interested in this, the ages, ages are fifteen to twenty-five, and you can have um any youth interested in, within the writing of Nanaimo Lady Smith, send an email to paul-manley@parl.gc.ca. And uh, I will get in contact with them and give them more information about um, about joining the, the Youth Advisory Council, the next
And the other, like, the other key aspect of this is to, for them to voice what their concerns are, like what they want, what they want me to be doing in the House of Commons, what they want me to be talking about. Um, youth are under, underrepresented in the political system. And, and of course, you can't vote until you're eighteen years old, but a lot of the legislation that's, you know, before parliament right now is going to affect youth. So it's important to get that perspective, so.
Pretty much all of it. Is cer- certainly, certainly youth who are close to um, any, anybody, you know, fifteen to eighteen, there's, there's nothing being debated in parliament that isn't going to affect them, but arguably um, all youth. So, yeah, definitely. And there is um, definitely, it's been very interesting and gratifying to, to have um the youth on the council and they've been super engaged and, and interested. Um, youth, there, there were excellent questions that came up when, when we had the senator there. And uh, and also really good discussion around Bill C twelve, which, which also the youth chose. Uh, we sort of, Paul went through all the, um, Paul and the senator actually went through all the bills that are right now in front of the House of Commons in the Senate. And we had a poll on which bill the youth wanted to uh, the workshop first. And Bill C twelve was um, the Climate Accountability Act was the one that the youth chose. So uh, closing words here, Paul. First of all, before we go there, I want to thank everybody that submitted questions uh in the, um, in the chat and on Facebook. I'd like to thank Lori for moderating the um, the chat, the YouTube chat. And um, please don't forget to subscribe to Paul's YouTube channel. So if you're on YouTube, you can click on the subscribe button and you can click on the little um bell. And you'll get, it'll pop up in your, when you're on YouTube, whenever there's a new video. Uh, you can also visit paul-manleymp.ca and Manly has no E, it's M-A-N-L-Y, paul-manleymp.ca. And learn more, you can subscribe there to uh, to the website and learn more about the work that Paul's been doing. Um, and once again, I want to remind people that um, two weeks from today, on uh, May twelfth, um, Nanaimo discourse journalist Julie Chadwick is going to be joining Paul for a community conversation about housing affordability in Nanaimo and talk about the series, that the excellent series of writing that she has done in the discourse. So that's uh, May twelfth, two weeks from today.
All right, well, thanks, everybody for tuning in. And I'm always here, you know, to, if I didn't answer your question tonight, then I'm more than happy to answer at a later time. And um, if you have any issues related to federal government that you need help with, that's what my, my staff and I are here to do. And uh, to listen, listen and work for you uh, not in a nonpartisan compassionate caring way. And so, you know, we're not, we're not here to uh, do anything but provide good public service and to represent you to Ottawa. Feel free to get in touch, either phone, phone fax or internet.
Yeah, uh, so thanks, everybody, and I hope you have a good night. Stay safe out there, stay healthy and safe. Be nice to each other. It's been a difficult year and we aren't out of the woods yet, so, but we will pull through. So thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Yeah, stay safe, everyone. Take care.